...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with which we can testify.
Roll call of officers.
Aron.
Here.
Aaron.
Here.
Hannah.
Here.
Hannah.
Here.
Hannah.
Here.
President.
Here.
Minutes of June 11th.
Move to approve the minutes for the working session on June 11th as presented.
Second.
Any discussion at the table? Roll call vote.
Cameron.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Hannah.
Yes.
Hannah.
Yes.
Minutes of June 25th. No, June 11th the regular.
Move to approve the minutes of the regular session on June 11th as presented.
Second.
Discussion at the table. Roll call.
Cameron.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Hannah.
Yes.
Hannah.
Yes.
Yes.
Minutes of June 25th.
Move to approve the minutes for the working session on June 25th as presented.
Second.
Discussion at the table. Roll call.
Cameron.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Hannah. Yes.
Hannah.
Yes.
Warrants payable.
Warrants payable for this month total $642,969.32. As usual, the largest ones are Northwestern Energy for $12,415.54, Republic Services $38,383.89, and Billings Asphalt to help repair our roads $15,591. I'm not reporting on what we are spending at this point for the Hagan Water Project until we're finished with that, and then I'll announce a huge number all at one time. Move to approve the warrants for payable.
Second.
Discussion at the table. Officer reports, everybody received that in their packet for the month of May. Chief, do you want to hit the highlights on that?
I can't. So, IMC, which is a program that we use to keep our stats, keep our records, is down. And we share that with the county, it's actually the county site, that's where we get our information from, dispatch logs and that. Unfortunately, they've been down before the 4th of July, so it's a wrong weekend to be down. I'm not able to generate a report this month, you will get it as soon as it comes back up, I'll make sure that I get that out here as far as the June report. What I put on your desk, or your workstation today, is actually May, because I missed the last meeting, it was two months ago, and I did get you that. So, as I wanted also to report, we are currently going to be hiring, or looking for, a new applicant for the police department. Sergeant Chris Lopez resigned, and so with that, we are also looking at a promotional process in our department, we're also looking at a new hire. We hired up the Testing Consortium, which is a statewide organization that tests throughout the state, and it doesn't exclude out-of-state applicants, we actually have some out-of-state applicants as well. And with that, we received 38 applicants that we sent out to apply for the city of Red Lodge. So with that, we get a very large poll, and we're able to select the best candidates to serve the people here in Red Lodge, and we're excited about that process and moving forward, and with the promotion process as well as the new hire.
Yes, Dave.
Chief Wells, I know you're dated down, can you anecdotally kind of tell us how the 4th of July went, and can you include in that specifically fireworks and how like anything?
There were fireworks. So, what we did, we're short handed, like I said, with the shortage of officers that we have, we have one right now, we're right in the wall where we get the benefit of all the officers, but currently we're behind three officers out of a department of seven, which is very shorthanded to get it done. And so we're doing very well as far as getting our work done. With responding to calls, fireworks, I know that people did receive warnings, how many they have received, we do not know, but moved on to the next. I know that I personally worked on Friday night, and I sat, I would, fireworks were going off this end of town, I would sit and wait to see who was doing it, and I would wait and wait, and then I would have to go to this end of the town, and as soon as I got over there, they would go off. Now, I sat, blacked out for over a half hour trying to find this person's doing it, and was unable to do it. So, they're somewhat elusive to find, I know that a lot of people think that they're very easy to find, but trying to get them is just tough. But we do try and tell people that they're not allowed to shoot fireworks off, so an exact number I cannot give you, I do know that the officers did an attempt, but an exact number I don't have in front of me today.
Have you turned on Find My iPhone on your iPhone so they can?
That's what I'm doing wrong.
I know it was a lot quieter in my neighborhood this year than it has ever been.
So, yeah, we, you know, we hit a few kids, they'll say, listen guys, you gotta, just can't do it here, and so we move along with that. But there was definitely some big ones out there, and we did, like I said, I personally tried to find them, and they're not as easy as you would think, you know, they're in the sky, but trying to track where they came from is a little bit harder.
Well, I have a question.
Yes.
Last year at budgeting time, you said that you could provide 24/7 coverage with six officers.
It's very hard, there was some overtime that was required to do that. I don't believe that you can do that totally with six officers, and I'll tell you why. If you look at the number of officers, every officer gets three weeks vacation that is given to them by the state, and the reason for that is because the job that we have is very stressful, and the state recognizes that they must give that three weeks off so that they can recuperate. They also accumulate comp time, rather than getting paid out, they can take the time off, which saves the city money, because they're not paying that overtime and hanging out in that mess. And then they have sick time, and officers do get sick. And so with all that taking place, we're looking at just one of the officers only covers vacation, sick time, comp time, and we don't really get a whole lot out of it. Now, this year, we have replaced a total of three officers quit, which creates distance. I can assure you that we've done an outstanding job, my guys have worked very hard, very tired of making sure the citizens are protected in this community, but with that, like I said, there's a cost to that, and there's a cost to, I'm gonna put it, seven officers is really what it takes to function this department.
You're welcome. We'll move on to mayor comments. First thing I want to talk about is Bear Tooth Rally, had a talk with Glenn, I believe he talked with Diane, also, they're gonna bring the Budweiser team in, they're gonna be doing some, they're gonna go down Broadway and do some deliveries on one of the days. I guess all we ask for is, and I know Budweiser, the people are really good about cleaning up after horses, they're gonna have flag people out on Broadway, and they're gonna do their deliveries, but they're gonna be here for a while. Do you want to add anything to that, Heather?
That event will be on Saturday, and they hope to hit all the bars in town that have Budweiser, and the stops will be very brief, so they'll be kind of slowed down and get the delivery done and off they go, and then we're hoping for maybe a meet and greet up at the rodeo grounds at some point during the week, but at this point, we don't know. And then on Sunday, they will be part of opening ceremony as well for the actual Iron Horse Rodeo, so it'll be pretty cool.
So, from what Glenn told me, you already have the permit from the state, blessing from the state to use Broadway for that.
For that particular, well...
For the delivery.
We have a signed document, but we needed your blessing as well.
Right. Can we give them our blessing?
Didn't we do that as part of the, I remember discussing, this isn't the first time we've heard of it, I remember discussing that as part of the, you know, it wasn't part of the approval, because we didn't have that information. They have my blessing, that's the same thing that you have, isn't it?
Do we have a written plan of the flag people, and, I mean, somebody driving, this is the plan?
Chief Wells has talked with, we've talked that over about the flag people that have been trained, all of that.
The flag people do need to be trained, we can't allow stop signs because it's a state highway, because a stop sign is a truck full of lights. But we were assured that trained individuals would be there to assist with traffic control, to get that through safely and, and all that, it's a pretty cool thing to have, we're excited for them to be here.
We have, we have flag girls pulling a wagon in town every night.
Yeah.
So, it's not like it's completely...
Right, it's not like it's a new concept, other than we're gonna have people wanting to get their pictures with it, which is a great thing to do, and I think it'll, I think it'll blow off well.
They're a wonderful entry for any event here. They haven't been here for a while, they, the plan usually is to go to a community once every five years, we had them two years in a row, so they've stretched out now.
They like it.
They're just a wonderful, yeah. When they were here for the 4th of July, we had them meet and greet at the parking lot at the bowling alley, we were allowed to do that, they, I worked with them and they thought it was wonderful, and of course, everybody came there and took pictures.
Mayor, do you want just an informal stop call, or would you like a motion?
A formal stop call.
Yes.
Yes.
Your blessing. Budget meeting update, everything's been set, July 22nd at 2:00 PM at City Hall, that's when the auditors will be here, the city will give its PowerPoint presentation covering everything from what a mill is to resort tax to enterprise funds. The auditor will be on, after our presentation, on conference call, so he can answer any questions from the public, everybody's invited. You want what's? Yeah, and we'll post that, so you'll have an opportunity, if you have a question of the auditors, you can talk to us again. Also, the auditors are gonna be here on the 12th, they're gonna be giving a year in, and you're welcome to come in and ask your questions of them at that time also.
So, this Friday? This 12th. Oh, August 12th.
Thank you for saying that, Mayor.
We want to the CBDG grant update, the grant didn't meet their criteria, so we returned down for that round of the grant, so let you know. And that is the end of my mayor's comments, we'll move on to public comments, anyone may address the council at this time on any topic within the city's jurisdiction, not specifically on this agenda, we'll be keeping it at three minutes, please come to the podium, give your name and address, and your three minute comment. Open that up now.
Everybody wants to talk, huh?
No. We'll close that, move on to old business. Resolution 3518, authorize mayor to sign Energy Core 2019-2020 Host Site Application, this is for action.
Move to approve Resolution 3518, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Red Lodge, authorizing the mayor to sign the Energy Core 2019-2020 Host Site Application.
I have a second.
Catherine, you want to give us a quick rundown on this?
Um, yeah, so the Host Site Application is basically just Red Lodge saying that we're interested in having another person serve in my position as a sustainability coordinator for the city for 2019-2020. The application itself lays out the duties that that member will, you know, partake in and oversee over the course of the year, and that's basically it. By approving, by approving it and sending it in, we will allow the National Center for Appropriate Technology to begin their recruitment effort, that usually takes like a month or so, and then they send applicants to us, and then the city goes through those, and then we get to pick who we want to be the next person. I did talk to the head lady at NCAT today, just about the repercussions of submitting this application, and then if it turns out, once budgeting's completed, that, you know, we don't want it and we don't have space in the budget, are we tied into anything, is there any obligation? And she said, no, this just authorizes them to begin the recruitment effort, it allows us to begin the recruitment effort, and then once a member is selected and the budget's done, and we know who we want, and that we want them, and that we have the money, then we sign an MOU with NCAT, so that's where we're at.
Discussion at the table, Dave.
You've done a fantastic job, everybody unanimously down. The question I have, to your understanding, is this an ongoing and perpetual position? Was it set up to think that this is gonna go on and on and on, or is the theory that it'll come in and it'll be for three or four years and at some point, and that has gotten, what's your thoughts on that?
I know that NCAT hopes that the Host Sites will continue to bring kids in perpetuity, because it, you know, it creates good jobs for kids coming out of school, amazing professional development, and really, it's a good investment in any organization, I think, to have a full-time staff person who specializes in energy efficiency and, you know, solid waste and all of those fun things, to have a full-time person there working 40 hours a week for $11,000 a year, so, but I know that, you know, Host Sites do fall in and out some years, they won't bring in a member, and then the next year they will, so really, it's up to the Host Site.
Would you clone yourself and come back?
No, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I kind of looked over the, the application that we got, that describes all the projects, and last time we had this in front of us, this discussion, Lonnie told us that the $12,000 is split equally among general fund, water, and sewer. And looking through the projects that you've been involved in, there were none of them that were, that really fit into the water or sewer budget. There were 14 of the 16 fell under departments that are more in the general fund, and two of them were more suited to solid waste. So if we, if we paid for this position, as we should with the correct funds, it would be $10,500 budgeted to general fund, and $1,500 to solid waste.
Jim, do you want to address that, what you have?
You know, as far as water too, yes, we, he's been monitoring our solar station out there, and seeing where we're at for what it's doing, she monitors the savings we're getting off of the new pumps we've put in, the motors that we've put in, what the savings have been, every month he sends me a deal saying what the savings have been, we've done all the lighting, working on the new lighting at the city shops, at the water plant, and at the sewer plant, which we're in the process of doing right now, which, so I'd say he does work for water and sewers, he does a lot for water and sewers.
I would say too that I've been in conversations with a company out of North Dakota called Midorico, they've come down to Red Lodge, and they spoke, they've talked to us for months now, we've been looking into the feasibility of installing solar bees at the wastewater treatment plant, that's not one of those projects that's listed, I'm not really sure why I left it out, it's like, we're still waiting to get back from them, what it would cost, what the project would look like, and then ultimately, that's something that would end up on Jim's desk as a potential option. But like Jim said, we, we have brought in the National Center for Appropriate Technology to do an LED retrofit analysis of our entire wastewater treatment and water treatment facilities, so that includes, you know, all the water and sewer buildings, and that'll be a big project that the next person will oversee. And also, in terms of the variable frequency on those, on those equipment pieces, so...
And are those projects in here? Because I don't see anything at the wastewater treatment plant.
They're, they're under LED retrofit expansion on city buildings, it's in more of the description, it doesn't specifically say, I don't think, as a line item, or like as the title of one, that like wastewater treatment plant and sewer.
So part of that would be paid for that, but I just really think that we have to be careful as a council, that when we are allocating money from water and sewer enterprise funds, that we're allocating that money for the provision, the improvement, and the maintenance of the services that we're providing in water and sewer, that's what those enterprise funds are supposed to pay for. And when we lump in wastewater treatment plant with all the other city business, or buildings, for LEDs, it doesn't really show to me that this is, that we're, you know, we're gonna build this $4,000 under wastewater, when we're getting LED retrofits in all of the buildings.
All of the buildings already have LED, well, the majority of the buildings do, the ones that do not at this point are the wastewater treatment and water treatment facilities, so...
Those have already been paid for with water and sewer bees, because that's where you're...
You said they have not been?
They have not, that is a project for next year.
I know, but the ones that are done were paid for out of water and sewer bees, there's a bit.
We've got the BFD drives, and I remember mentioning this before, about why didn't you put that down, that saved a ton of money, but again, I don't want to speak for councilperson Cameron, but I think what I'm hearing is, Mayor, if we go through and approve this, like the conversation we had last time was, was it in your budget, are you comfortable? It sounds to me like that's probably a two-person conversation, it's to you, it aligns with what's anticipated, knowing that we, none of us have crystal balls at work, that, that it's something that we can defend, that is being paid for, and it may be that more of it needs to come from general fund than what's currently allocated, but the expectation will be that we fund it appropriately.
Right. You know, and what this does is just start the ball rolling so that we do get in line for another one, and like Catherine said, if we get to that point, we don't have it in the budget, then we're not obligated.
Well, the application is up, we're accepting applications, so no one's...
I've spoken with NCAT, and they have our, they're advertising for our position on their website, they're not advertising anywhere else, so really, they're not advertising for us nearly as broad as they do everyone else, because we have not submitted this application, so our name is not out there, no one is actively applying for our position.
Well, Catherine, I think you've done a really good job, and I think that Caitlin before you did an excellent job too. But as a person who's worked for grants and government agencies and nonprofits for about 35 years, I know that sometimes those things come to an, to an end, and what the goal is usually for the grants that I've worked for, is sustainability in the programs that you've developed. You've done an excellent job with recycling, and with the LEDs, and with the, you know, charging stations. And I think that there's probably 10, 10 or more agencies that you work with, or communities or groups, and I think that it's time for those groups to step up and maintain and sustain those programs, that's, I'm just one vote, but that's, that's how I feel. Thank you for your service, and I wish you were coming back, because if you were coming back, I may have a different, different approach to this, but to start somebody new, to come in, and then have to, it takes a good four to five months to learn a job when you're coming in.
Jim, Caitlin.
She came in, Caitlin, they said, Caitlin left her, here's where we are here, and I, she picked it up right from there and continued, right, all of that, and I don't believe there was any four or five months lost of time of what was happening and where we were headed, like I said, the solar deal, and our BFD motors, she did all of the paperwork, everything to get us those refunds, when we put in the BFDs, I didn't have to do any, she did it, presented it, and we got those refunds, and that was all in her hands, and she did an excellent job.
And I completely understand that I work with community groups, but as you know, you have to work with the community in order to get things done in Red Lodge.
Absolutely.
And I calculated for you guys last month how much money this position has brought in over the last four years, and it's just shy of $80,000, that the city of Red Lodge has proceeded through grants and donated project work from community groups to the city, and, you know, documented project savings and energy savings. So I think that the program and those numbers speak for themselves, and I don't, I don't know, I don't, I think that, I think that the city should continue, because I think it's on a really great track, and I think there's a ton of community support for the program, and I just think it's the right thing to do, but I appreciate your opinion.
I've also personally worked with Catherine, and she is wise beyond her years. My concern is, in the work session, we still said that we don't know where we're gonna be with our budget for the end of the year yet. So, I guess I'm comfortable going forward, as long as we can say, you know what, we can't fund this this year. It doesn't matter how good the idea is, or how emotional the subject is, if there's no money to pay for, you can't do it.
Yeah, and that's why, like, I clarified today with my boss in NCAT that, you know, this, this doesn't lock the city in, I wasn't aware of that last time, but there is a second process that will happen, if the money's there, once the budget's finished, once all the applicants have been reviewed, and if the city feels there's anyone who can take over this position appropriately, then there will be an MOU process, and that's when the money's locked in, and you have to spend it, and you have to have it budgeted.
And this is giving us a chance to make that decision at the appropriate time.
And that will probably happen in September, is when that process will take place.
Any more discussion at the table? Open that to the public? Come out in the public, take a roll call vote.
Cameron?
No.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine.
Resolution 3525, City Council Rules of Procedure Action. Dave.
Move to approve Resolution Number 3525, a resolution of the City of Red Lodge, amending City Council Rules of Procedure.
Second.
Discussion at the table.
There are two versions that were handed out in the packet, one is the resolution without commentary, the second one is with commentary, that was built in response in anticipation that the last time the mayor had asked, what does this section do, what does that section do, I hope this format worked for anybody, everybody, there's nothing new on here that we haven't discussed, but I'm happy to offer two cents on anybody's opinion cast, I want everybody to be comfortable with it.
I'm comfortable with it.
Yes.
And you help. Always, always good to have somebody helping you.
Any other discussion at the table on Rules of Procedure? Discussion from the gallery. Roll call.
Cameron?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Hannah? Yes.
Yes.
New business, MOU between Montana DEQ, City of Red Lodge, Coal Miners Park.
Sure. This is in relation to the DEQ funding a new soil cap rectorory at Coal Miners Park, a stop and fill, which we've worked with Red Lodge Youth Soccer and the Parks Board on putting two soccer fields up there. DEQ's been very gracious in this endeavor to help solidify the cap and make it a usable park space for us, with a great amenity that has been called out in the Parks Board, and one thing we've lacked the most in our parks is soccer field, so the end result of this is, I think, great for the city. The MOU has some requirements of us, that most of it we're already doing, for example, number A, we, we will assume responsibility for the cap, we already have been since they did the work on that in the late eighties, late eighties, and we came right here so, when they did that, so that really doesn't change, that we'll work with the Parks Board, really, it's also with Red Lodge Youth Soccer, to make sure that there's not funding in place to do what Red Lodge Youth Soccer is for us. We have our second MOU with Red Lodge Youth Soccer that was done, was early last year, on the development of the field and their responsibilities. We'll be responsible for leak spraying and maintenance, things we already do, they'll actually do the leak spraying for Route 2020, which is a nice benefit for us. And we are working on a MOU with BRTA, who has agreed to take on the bike trails up there And we are working on a MOU with BRTA who has agreed to take on the bike trails up there to. If maintenance on the bike trails were to not be up to snuff, we may have to end the bike trails at some time. Hopefully it will not come to that. This is some of the main things we're responsible for in terms of that MOU.
I entertain the motion.
Move to approve the memorandum of understanding between Montana Department of Environmental Quality and City of Red Lodge, Montana for Coal Miners Park.
Second.
Discussion at the table.
Just summarize my recollection from where we were at the work session. The comment was, what are we committing ourselves to from a dollar standpoint? And again, just understand that we have that there. Do you want to summarize again, James? What, I know you kind of said, hey, we're already doing some of this. Can you quantify that and put some dollar amounts? I know you expressed it was somewhat minimal because it was being covered from other sources, but for the benefit of those in attendance here that weren't there, can you?
Sure. So DEQ is paying for one hundred percent of the soil that will be added there. Approximately, if I remember correctly, about eighteen inches topsoil will be placed up there, which I've heard quite a few comments that it won't work, because the football field gets too wet and doesn't drain properly. This will have significantly more topsoil on the football field. And it will degrade at one and a half percent rate that edges keep it drained. So it is a better design that DEQ is paying for. So the construction of the field will cost us nothing, but Red Lodge Youth Soccer raised, I believe, at this point about seventy thousand dollars to put in their sprinklers, seed mix, everything that they need to do. Red Lodge Youth Soccer is paying for everything that they have to do with the wildlife field. So the city has no cost to this project. We just have to ensure that there's no deterioration to.
But if Red Lodge Youth Soccer failed to come through, we are representing that we are going to take care of it, because we're the ones signing on the dollar.
If Red Lodge Youth Soccer were not able to put the fields there, the contractor has been instructed to put in natural grasses at the top, and DEQ will walk away at that point in time. If that were to happen, then Red Lodge Youth Soccer could come back at a later date, and then they would have to take out the grasses.
You said something that I don't remember hearing before that caused just a half a second of pause. You said you've heard a lot of people saying it won't work and referenced the football field as an example. Convince me it's going to work.
The, I don't know how much topsoil was definitely put on the football field, but it wasn't graded very well. It didn't have a whole lot of topsoil on it. And obviously, the football field works for football. It doesn't drain very well, so they can't use the field as much as they'd like to for other practice. So it serves its purpose for football, but it doesn't get as much use potentially because it wasn't like the topsoil.
So rather than impacting just the use, how does it impact the cost of maintaining it?
I think it improves, it decreases any chances of a ruin of it because of more topsoil on the cap. It's putting eighteen inches up there. That's a lot of topsoil that's been added for many, many years.
Any more discussion at the table?
There's one last update on it. They, the DEQ, has the project up to bed. They're waiting for this MOU to be signed, and then they will pick the contractor. Theoretically, the contractor could start sometime after the.
Comment from the public?
I just have a question. My name is Trish LeFonge. On the grading from an eighteen-inch topsoil and bringing it down, what about the wildlife sanctuary? What about the dirt road that leads up to it? And the maintenance on those roads?
The road that comes from the high school backyard of the detention pump, my recollection is that won't be impacted. The road that leads to the wildlife sanctuary, nothing in that parking lot will be disrupted. There'll be trucks there while we're moving in the dirt, but long term, it would have no effect on the parking lot.
Even with the grading, making that soccer field higher?
Correct. There could be potentially a little more runoff from the west half of the field that runs down into the parking lot and towards the detention pump.
Any more public comments? Roll call.
Cameron?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayhoun?
Yes.
Weemer?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution three, five, two, four, authorization to submit TSET planning grant for water PDR.
I move to approve Resolution number thirty-five, twenty-four, resolution of the City of Council to authorize submission of a TSET application.
We'll give a little rundown on this, James.
Sure. This would be one of two grants we would apply for, for a new water PDR. Our water PDR was done in nineteen ninety-six, is out of date now, especially with the Hagan Waterline being done. That was the last major project in that PDR. We've got some other needs that we know of that need to be addressed, including a couple of water lines. This PDR would also evaluate our water needs and our future needs through water. The TSET grant would be for fifteen thousand dollars. We would seek another grant from the Department of Natural Resources for another fifteen thousand dollars. That grant has not been released yet. It's due to come out in the next month or two. And then we would use our water funds for the additional match.
You want to tell everybody what a PDR is?
That is a preliminary engineering report. And just so that people are aware, part of the reason we need to do that is so when we look for future grants going forward, for example, we receive grants on the Hagan Waterline project, we need to have this preliminary engineering report completed in order to get future grants. So that is part of the importance of that PDR. Not only does that help us prioritize, but also allows us to get potentially six-figure grants, three, four hundred thousand dollar grant down below. We have that PDR in front of us to be a factor.
Discussion at the table.
I have a question. So this eighty thousand dollars, which will be the toll that's here, that's going to cover the preliminary engineering report for the whole water system with this?
No.
James, can you speak to where the fifty thousand is coming from as far as a budget standpoint?
The water fund. I don't know if Lonnie or Jim can speak a little more to that, but I just know it's.
Part of the enterprise budget fund right now?
Saves us thirty thousand dollars.
That seems low for an engineering report.
Any more questions at the table?
You sound like my wife does. But look at everything we save, but it still costs us. Why did the checking account go down?
Questions from the public? Roll call.
Cameron?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayhoun?
Yes.
Weemer?
Yes.
Westwood?
Yes.
I'd use application, fundraiser, action. Let's take this one.
In the absence of anybody else juggling at the bit, I move to approve the use of city-owned property permit for the Red Lodge Area Community Foundation in the twenty nineteen run, fundraiser for charities.
Second.
Comment from the table?
We get an objection from the.
Do we have anyone from the foundation?
I sure am.
You want to step up to the podium?
Yeah, you bet.
Can you tell us who you are and tell us about the fundraiser?
Well, I don't think I have the pleasure of introducing myself to most of you or any of you. My name is Stephen Colcombe, so I'm the thriving nonprofit programmer at the Community Foundation. And a majority of my job is working on the fundraiser. So this year, we have fifty-nine charities participating in the fundraiser. We'll have our second major meeting tomorrow night. We'll discuss how to promote them and get them fundraising for the fundraiser. So this is my first year. I moved to Red Lodge actually a year ago, April, July, last week. So this is my first, kind of in my first full year of the fundraiser, and doing some of these planning and policy and applications and things. So I just want to say, I appreciate you guys kind of taking the time to go over this, working with James, with Lonnie, and getting this in front of you guys. And yeah, I'm here to answer any questions you guys might have about the application or about the fundraiser in general this year.
Questions from the table?
Lonnie, I did not see anything about the application review fee. I didn't see any dollar amounts or anything. Just the receipt, that refers to the dollars, not just the application received?
Look right above it. It says one hundred and five hundred.
Oh, it's, it's, it's still covered up, so okay.
Did you prepare this?
I did, with a little bit of help. Well, thank you. It was mostly a lot of help.
And just save it, because it'll be the same.
We'll do, absolutely.
The nonprofits couldn't function without your help.
Well, I can't function without the nonprofits. It's a very mutual, it's a great mutual. You know, if there's anybody that understands serving, it's you guys out there. So it's really a privilege to get to work with all of them and do these kind of things and all the other things we're going to do throughout the year.
Any other questions from the table? Questions from the public? Roll call.
Cameron?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayhoun?
Yes.
Weemer?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome to Red Lodge.
Thank you.
Resort Tax Renewal Committee Appointments Action. Now, as you know from the resolution, we're two members. The mayor is responsible for two members from the corporate limits and one residing within the five miles. Council is responsible for one member from the corporate limits and one member from the residing within the five miles. Mayor's appointments is Tim Weemer, Colleen Stevenson, and Tom Coons, elect councilor.
Move to approve the mayor's appointments for the Resort Tax Committee.
Second.
Any discussion, discussion on this?
I'm just, I'm going back to my notes, because I process things better sometimes by looking at them. I was just validating, so. This, the last time I've seen, two members from within the corporate limits by the mayor. So who are the two that you sent there again, sorry?
From the corporate limits, Tim Weemer, Colleen Stevenson.
And then from without?
Tom Coons.
Just to be clear as well, in the resolution, the mayor could pick all three city people. He doesn't have to pick a county person, just like the city council has to pick a city resident, and the other resident just needs to be within five miles in that ten years.
That can be inclusive for any of the applications.
And you all may remember that I volunteered to be the councilperson on this committee.
And Diane, I'd like to nominate too Diane, so I don't know.
Can we get that with mine first? Any other discussion on my picks?
Good pick.
Good, good vote.
Well, a great vote. Let's do a vote.
Weemer? Yes. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayhoun?
Yes.
Weemer?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'll entertain the two picks for the council.
Mayor, if I may get a clarification first from James, there was one applicant that there was a question if they were within the five miles. Were you able to confirm if they were qualified or not qualified?
They are qualified.
And who was that? Heather is, lives in Bear Creek.
She was within five miles.
As the crow flies?
As the crow flies.
I'd say we make it easy and pick the two people that are left that live within the city. Because they live within the county too.
The mayor's got it open for.
You guys discussed it?
Do you want to?
That would be Betsy and Jeremy. They both live in the city. Everybody else on the list lives outside of the city, I mean.
I don't have a problem with Betsy. I would like to see Heather, one of the big persons, a big presence in this town, business owner.
Does it, you don't have a problem with Betsy, or?
I do not.
Do you have a problem with Jeremy?
Yes, I'd like to clarify. I don't have a, I don't have a problem with anybody besides her. And I even, I even heard the idea that we put the, we put the names in a half draw.
Yeah, that makes sense.
But, but at the same time, I have to, I have to say that there, I like the idea of Jeremy for that, kind of that younger and newer and very enthusiastic presence as well. I guess we just discussed it with the council.
Yeah, and we have Jade on the list too. Actually, we should probably say who all the, all of them are.
Sure.
We have Betsy Scanlon, Jeremy Bowles, Gordy Blevins, Kathy Robson, and Jay Haskins. I don't know what her last, her other last name is. I like the name. Jade, are you here? Hi, that's you. I think everybody should be considered if we're going to not go with just those people that live in the city. Put names in the half. You need to add the outside city people.
Laurie, Rob, you guys didn't like it?
Heather.
I would just like to say, I am concerned, which is why I asked the question, is Bear Creek may be as a crow flies, but it is not from town sign to town sign. I do not want to get the council in any type of liability situation. And I also live in an incorporated city. And I don't know if that would make a difference or not, but it possibly could. I'd also like to bring up that there was another application that was, that applied, that never showed up, and that was Jody Ronnie. And I'm not sure. She applied? Yes, she did. And it is on the website. Or no, it was, it didn't make the website, but she did apply. Do you recall?
I believe we, I received something before we even passed the resolution and everything.
It was after I sent an email to James, only basically asking a question, not actually applying to be on this. But I do know that she did send something quite extensive, and it never showed up anywhere. So I'm just putting that out there. Jody, is she not here tonight?
Everything that I've received within, since it was, once it was posted and through that time period is on to Jane tonight.
I have that.
Is there, is there a value, I'm just proposing this to council? And I draw the assumption that everybody who's applied is mature enough to not take it personally or offended, that they end up not being selected, and that there, that they happen at it. But does everyone want to go through and maybe say who their two choices are and who the overlaps are, or what's, what's a good way to do this?
Well, so far, I have Betsy, Jeremy, and Emily. Is there anyone else who wanted to add to the top three?
The two I had were included in your list.
Might as well. So let's narrow it down from there.
Kind of hearing from Heather that Jody Ronnie may have submitted an application, and she does live within the city, I wonder if maybe we need to reopen that, just the council's pick. Tell these people that are already on here, that the mayor did. You know, tell these people that, that are already on here, that, that the mayor didn't choose, that they're in, and give Jody the opportunity to resend whatever it is she sent. If she sent an email, it should have a date on it of when it was sent. If she sent a letter, we'll have a date on it. You know, and if she just did it by picking up the phone and calling, then she didn't meet the criteria of submitting the application. I'm really uncomfortable going forward if there was a screw-up somewhere.
Mayor, did you say you, you recall seeing it?
You know, I received something from, quite a while ago. But, like I said, I don't recall it during the time period that it was posted, so...
What would be the impact of re-reading this decision?
Well, that's, that's where I was at. Let's go ahead and just carry this to the work session meeting. And we can just do a head nod on it then. So, and that'll give you guys more time, I think, you know, we have a list of three, and if Jody's does pop up somewhere, we'll go ahead and throw away that, in that hole, and...
Then we might get more.
So, just to, just to confirm that my understanding is right, we are not reopening it?
We ended, we, you know, it was, it was over for a period.
Yeah, so we're not reopening it, we're just validating that we have all of the applicants that applied within that timeframe, is that correct?
Right.
And I have six with a possibility of seven, if my counting is correct.
Then can we put off the, the council pick to an end too? And maybe we need to submit letters to our body here to, you know, who the people are. Those that are, those of us that are interested, and some have more interest than others. And maybe, maybe we need to look at that as more, more professional than...
You know, I do look at Lori, because she does all the financial part of that. I can take a survey heads up on that.
Yeah, and I will, I still want to do it. I'm very comfortable with Heather too. Just thought I'd mention it. In spite of, I mean, she has said about living in Bear Creek and that. Her businesses are here, her business is here, her work is here, and she does a lot for the community, so I'm comfortable with it.
I do not...
I'm just tossing that out, but we, we should talk about it.
James has ruled that it's, it's good there. On the council appointment, is there a clarification? Is that... One member, I'm looking for the council appointment, James, you may be able to see it quicker than me. If that is, is that an appointment made by the council, or is that made by the mayor and approved by council?
Should be made by mayor, approved by the council.
I'm not sure. The resolution didn't...
Resolution wasn't specified.
I don't know what the standard procedure is.
It's on the second page there. Deployment by state, you know, it's all in.
Maybe we put those of us who are interested in a half, welcoming. There you go.
Rob?
In my lack of understanding of this, like when I look at it, like having the fire chief, who owns a lot of businesses in town, it's like he's busy, apparently, and... It, it would seem it would be better to have, you know, it's like, okay. We need more money for the fire departments, you're right on it, but you know, it's like, you know, to keep, I don't, I don't know the best way to pick people.
Well, he's already, he's already made the grade. So, we're looking, we're looking at the other ones now, and then we're looking at the council pointy. I think what we'll do on the council pointy will, like I say, I, I believe my choice, but I would like everybody to just put their name in, in there, and then...
Take it to the work session.
Right.
Because we do have time.
Yeah.
Is everybody good? Move on, of course, from the public. There's an opportunity for any member of the public to report to the council on any topic of their desire. Once again, we'll do three minutes, up to the podium, name, address, and we'll open that up.
My name is Stephen Vale, and my address is twenty-six eleven Gray Blue Way. That's out by your settlement files. The site of the old Mountain Hill Trailer Park. It was just barely a hundred yards inside the city limits. It's a site for you. Uh, the issue I want to raise is the reason that I'm here, and apparently it wasn't an agenda item, and I was, my, my understanding that there was going to be some discussion concerning the level of staffing of the police department. And the concern on the part of the employees in the police department of being short-staffed. In other words, not having enough coverage when people are on vacations, people have sick time, et cetera, et cetera. I know that seven officers sounds good on any given day, but I don't recall in the eight years that I've been here, seven officers patrolling our esteemed city at the same time. I don't believe I've seen more than three maybe during the bike ride, and some other people as well. My concern is the public's safety other than those times of the large events. Those large events are low-hanging fruit in terms of how much staffing is it going to take. Pretty easy to look at that and say, we need more than what we're doing during a daily basis. My concern with this is on the regular days when those events aren't taking place, the coverage of the police department. If we have anything less than seven, then the workload is going to impinge on those people that are left to an unreasonable amount. I mean, this, this, this position, believe it or not, is seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. We may not actually be ticking the clock, but they are still a law enforcement officer and are still obligated to, to report to calls, reply to calls, and to perform their duty even if they're not on service at a particular time. So, my two bits is stick with seven, no less than seven, recruit from all means that are necessary, and simply make sure that everybody is adequately trained, certified, screened, et cetera. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Any other comments from the public? Those comments from the public, correspondents?
Yeah, we received quite a bit of correspondence. Correspondence from Betsy regarding the confetti after the parade at the, at the second, third, and fourth of July. Uh, I think, I think I emailed everything to you, and you included those, attached those to the minutes. I think I did remember those too. Yes, I think the last one that I sent today, I'd say it's in at ten forty-eight. Letter correspondence. We had some from a gal, or I got some, and I think I forwarded it to everybody about a gal that's doing an internship and wants to start a composting project in Red Lodge. I gave her my two cents and sent it off to everybody else on the council, and I think I sent that to you too, didn't I? My two cents was, you know, we need to probably, this might work better in the county. I didn't know about the Republic, the agreement that we have with Republic. If, if any of those kinds of services are limited to, to Republic, I don't know. I don't know what our contract reads for that. And that any of those, composting projects with the city of Red Lodge would have to be funded through solid waste. That was my thought, I think, that it would have to be solid, or paid for through solid waste. And that, you know, the city's resources are pretty tight, and is resources, not just money, but land and manpower and all of those things. She probably might have better luck if she searched for a private landowner on the county and got it approved by the DQ and the Sanitarium. And just my, did you get it?
I don't recall so much.
It was like last week.
Well, you responded. So, you did get it, yeah.
So, you're, you're...
It was about composting.
As I'm listening to you, though, you're, it sounds like she's asking for resources specifically from the city.
Yeah, she was asking what she was, actually, she was told to contact me. I don't know if she said she was told by the mayor, but I don't know. So, she said I was told to contact you, I think by the mayor. And about this composting program and what your thoughts are, and if you would support it. And I basically said, well, I'd support comp, compa, composting as long as it wasn't overrun by the city.
Since we all didn't get to correspond, I'm sorry. Any other correspondents?
Did you respond to her and tell her what your thoughts were?
Yeah, I did. I responded to her and I sent her letter and response, and you responded to it, to me, Lori, Lori. Found out an error.
That does sound like Lori.
Any other correspondents? We'll wait to see if that, any correspondence?
Maybe you guys discussed the work session.
Other business?
Mayor, I have just, just a question, and maybe we want to schedule it for the work session. And it kind of comes up a little bit with the confetti after parade. I'm going to duck over here behind my, my mug so that I'm not in direct line of fire with Lori. But as we've done these land use applications, and, and the fundraiser was a really, really good example for me of something that's very, very large scale, shutting down the road, they're responsible for their cleanup and stuff afterwards. Combine that with, with some of the stuff I did see about the confetti, and then, and then also some very prominent that... I, I recall saying in the past, thinking about the parade, and we had a discussion about the fourth of July, and now it's past tense, so it's a little bit safer discussion. Thinking, hey, that's the city, we don't need to do a land use, but it was very evident as we went through that that is actually put on by the camp, rodeo, I don't know if I can get the name right.
Yeah, I, I'm on the board for the Home of Champions.
Yeah, so the Home of Champions rodeo, and, and who does the parade. And, and my thinking is, and again, my goal being, I just want to make sure that we're being consistent across the board. And I've had people that have asked, again, you know, what's the state of the farmers market? And those are both very large, they're, you know, the fundraiser is an example of something that's very large scale. Everybody wants to see it continue. Everybody wants to see it go on, but at the same time, they go through the established process. And I think going in the future, we've already talked about doing that with the farmers market to make sure that it's done, and we've come up with a way that, that nonprofit organizations can, can do that through services as opposed to dollars. But I think we ought to widen that net and realize, unless somebody can give me a compelling reason about why the rodeo and parade don't fit into those categories, I'm inclined to think that they probably do. And it's just, just so that they can say, here's how we're going to clean up afterwards, and here's... It seems to me like, as we've been taking this big, kind of wide-angle lens and making sure we include everything, that that, that ought to be included as well. I think we ought to have that consistency there. So, maybe we discuss it at the, at the work session.
Yes.
We sweep the street every morning at five o'clock after every parade. We do it, we empty the garbage, we sweep the street. So, if you, on the fifth of July, if you came back, or the fourth, or the third, the street sweep, the garbage is empty. We do it for that, we do it for the Harley weekend. We do it every morning, on every, on both those big things in the city, when there's a new, new clinic, and a dinner for years. And there was no confetti when you came back out on the street the next morning.
When Martha Brown was on the council, she's the one who was driving that issue about filling out the forms and everything. And I asked every year about it, and she drove the issue just to say that the, that was not necessary, that that was a city event. And that's why that happened.
That was, that was, that was kind of my understanding and why I didn't push for it this year. But, but in the, in the conference that came up, it's, and, and again, you mentioned Harley, but Harley does a land use permit as well, as do the cars and...
They do that for the camping.
If I may also add, the, the Harley rodeo, for example, they, they use side streets to use camping. And another example of where we did not recently require a new city lease application process was for the bike race, the triathlon that just went through town a week and a half ago, because they were using Montana Park as a transportation right-of-way. So, they, they were wanting to have streets, so they're like, oh, very briefly, actually just warning, because bikers are coming through. But as MDP right-of-way and not sitting on land, that, I think is the big difference to what the parade, we're going through MDP right-of-way.
And I do get permission to use the highway from office and buildings every year. Tim Tinsley. Tom Tinsley.
I do say that the, the confetti, yeah, on the fourth, it's pretty intense.
Yes.
No, I think that's something.
Well, and, and the parade also uses the civic center parking lot and the side streets, and tie them up for a couple of days.
Not, not tied up completely.
And let's fill out the applications for that. I mean, I, thank you, Dave, for bringing it up. I think it, I think it's good to have a plan. I think, did the bikes, did they submit anything to say, this is the roads that we want to block up? There you go, it's a written plan, you know, it's, it's not really difficult. And it's not like, it's not like we're requiring any extra effort than we do require of the fundraiser, or we're going to require of the, of the farmers market.
I always sealed out the necessary forms, and then when, when it was decided I didn't have to, I stopped doing it.
That's great. And now, you know, we have new people.
I just, I just think that we are setting ourselves up for success with consistency.
Let's, let's move this to the work session.
Yeah. This is going back and forth, and every time we get new people on the council, they change their rules.
Well, we'll, we'll put it in a resolution, and then it'll be consistent. Sounds good.
Any other other business?
In the absence of anybody else jumping, I move to a chair, okay?
Meeting adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Okay, well, I figured that, but I was just, when I was sitting down there, it's been raining, and I want all that water to drain.
There is, worry about that, the big fog that they have raining.